Is there somebody here from Olympus?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Blaine Lucas again on behalf of Olympus.
Sir, can you make sure that that's on? I don't think it is.
Yeah, hold the bottom there.
Yeah, and then the light will come on. Keep holding until the light comes on.
We'll let you know.
There you go, you're good. It does.
Still doesn't sound like it's on though.
No, it's got to stop blinking. It's on now, should be.
Doesn't seem like it.
No, you know what, there's a red light on.
Fantastic.
No, we're good.
We're good.
We're good.
Nice to hear your person last through my introduction to this.
Yeah, one off.
Can we swap?
Yeah.
Last month we were remote, so it's nice to see things getting back somewhat back to normal anyway. Just to recap, obviously this plan was submitted well over a year ago, went on hiatus for a lot of reasons beyond control of all of us. Early this year, planning commission assembled together a number of questions that Olympus submitted a response to last month. For a year last month, they had to reintroduce the project with Bill Lincoln, in particular Manny Johnson to field the questions on a number of issues. We had Sol Shaper, our captain of salt there also. Since then, formulated down what we understood to be some takeaways that the board wanted. Mr. Payne.
Or just do the best I can, please. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Payne also poured along a letter that was relatively consistent with what we understood to be the takeaways that you wanted. And so earlier this week on Monday, we'd like to go a little earlier, but it's like herding cats on some of this stuff from various disciplines out there. But we submitted a response letter that included an update of the HOP for Leto, a copy of the application for the HOP in the county for Dionysus, the SDS sheets and the fencing drawing. We also followed that up. Also early this week, we received a letter from your consultant Trans Associates and Sol Shaper prepared a comment by comment response to that that was provided in township. Then last week, late last week, we received two comment letters from the engineer, one for each project, obviously. And we put together a line of comment by comment response on those that we've now provided to the board or commission. Our primary purpose tonight is to have our newest consultant, Paige Rosenthal, who was not available last month, provide an overview of the updated sound impact assessments that you prepared for both well sites. Certainly after that's done, in addition to any questions you have for Mr. Rosenthal, we have most of our team here and would be happy to respond if any questions the commission has about the other materials. So with that, I'll just turn it over to Paige. We did provide a handout, one for each well pad. It's in essence a summary of the core findings from the sound impact assessment updates that were done. So with that, I'll turn it over to Paige to kind of walk through both documents with you. Paige, I think we decided to start with Dionysus and anything left.
Go over the microphone and speak. Sorry I wasn't here, it was the wife's birthday, couldn't miss it, so I apologize, but thanks for having us. So to start out, kind of what we did is we just kind of summarized what we've done thus far. So with the Dionysus pad, you're kind of a summary of your ordinance referring to the 55 default ambient sound level. Do you all hear me?
We can. We can. I chatted them.
And so for the ordinance, we may not exceed the ambient sound level by five decibels during drilling, providing a limit of 70 decibels during drilling activity or operations. And for hydraulic fracturing or completions, the ambient level is not to be exceeded by 10 decibels, providing a limit of 75 decibels. After that, we have a location map showing the well pad. And we've identified numerous receiver points around the well pad to utilize as kind of points of, you know, reference for the modeling. The next page, we have the impact models with the vertical drilling. And so you'll see the predicted sound levels, the maximum predicted sound levels at the highest point would be for this pad, receiver one, which is due north of the well pad. And the predicted sound levels are not expected to exceed 48 decibels from the drilling operation. And Paige, the receiver point one, that's the surface owner's house, correct?
Yes.
Can you describe what 48 decibels is?
48 decibels is pretty quiet. A casual conversation is 60 decibels, 60, 65 decibels. So right now I'm probably speaking at 70. So it's significantly lower. And the way that noise is perceived by the human ear, if you have a 10 decimal increase or decrease, it's perceived by the human ear as being twice as loud or half as loud. So a quiet street would be a comparable sound level to, you know, mid to high 40s. So as you can see, like I said, 48 is the maximum predicted sound levels of the operation. That doesn't mean that the sound levels there won't ever go above that because a car drives by, it can be 80 decibels, 60 decibels, 70 decibels. But the predicted noise from the operation, 48. Horizontal drilling, you can see it's typically a little bit quieter in this area. It dropped down to 45.4 at the same receiver location, which is again the highest of all of the receiver points that were identified. For completions, the sound levels predicted were 54.9 at receiver one. Again, these are all well below the 60 or the 70 and 75 decibel limits as prescribed in the ordinance.
Paige, what's the decimal level of the nearest house, not the surface owner's, that's seven, receiver seven?
Yeah, so during completions, receiver seven, which is actually the closest, is predicted to be 51.3 decibels.
And what accounts for, I mean, either that one or two further away, why are they a higher decimal level than seven?
Elevation generally, it's position seven is down at a lower elevation than receiver one. It kind of sits down a little. So topography and vegetation, all this, moving back to the scenarios. And then scenario four was completions of water transfer. We did this after the fact. Typically, you know, we don't do this, but you guys had asked us to include the water transfer operation in the series of models. So we did add that. And so what we added during that was 10 trucks with onboard water pumps. And during completions, R1 is still the highest at 55.2 decibels.
So that's 0.3 decibels higher than what it was with the completions throughout.
In general, the water transfer trucks get swallowed up by the frac pumps. From a, you know, decimal standpoint, you don't take, you know, say 100 decibels and another 100 decibels, it doesn't equal 200 decibels. It would be more equivalent to like 103. So the impact of that is all taken into account in the software. And so basically, the bigger noise source is still the predominant impact, which is the frac trucks. And then the last page just kind of brings it all together. So receiver one, you know, is 1494 millimeter road extension. During vertical drilling, the predicted sound levels are to be no higher than 48. Horizontal drilling, 45.4, completions, 54.9, and completions with the water transfer, 55.2. I also included receiver seven as it's the closest receiver to the well pad. And during vertical drilling, sound levels are expected to be 45.1. 42.3 during horizontal drilling, 51.3 with completions not including water, and then when we added the water transfer, 51.7.
So are these, are these model estimates, the ones you just read, these for vertical drilling, is that the highest that you estimate, the highest decimal or is that an average?
That's the highest. But again, that's just the operational levels. The noise levels at the actual receivers likely will at some point be higher. You know, just things that are closer to receptors, whether it's road noise, shotguns, dogs barking, anything like that.
For the sound modeling, is that just basically all the equipment that you have that's put into a program? And then it calculates that decimal?
Decimal, yes.
Decimal reading?
Yeah, so we take all of the, you know, the largest noise sources that are stationary and consistent, you know? Like trucks moving about and whatnot is not included. It can be, but it's like, again, it's similar to the water trucks. It becomes just kind of washed out by the larger noise source.
Okay, so so this modeling is just the equipment only and it's not any kind of vegetation that might break it up or anything like that?
So in general, we don't use vegetation in these just because we don't know what time of month or year they're going to be out there. So it does include topography, so it does have elevational impact. That is all included. You know, and so, but like I said, we don't typically, you know, include the topography because we just don't know.
Vegetation?
Vegetation, yeah. So otherwise, your models assume that leaves are off the trees.
Yes, yes.
And that there's no trees?
Correct.
Okay.
You know, so I mean, if, you know, if it's now, then obviously we've got leaves and trees and all kinds of stuff, but you know, we just don't know.
Okay, thanks for clearing that up.
Could you tell us a little bit about the validation of these models? What have you done to validate them?
What do you mean, what have I done to validate?
What has been done to, these models were not, what you just read to us in bay, it's that were not measurements of sound at an existing facility. This was a model, a predictive model. So my question is, when that model was developed, could you describe for us the procedures that may have been used to validate the model? To tell truth to the model?
So you can't really do it for this location because this location hasn't been done. You can do it from like scenarios. The problem with that is, is all of them are different. You know, every location is different in some way, which is why we take, generally, we get all of the noise sources that they're going to use. We put them into the model and then we take the locational data, which is, you know, your GPS, all of your lat long stuff, all of the elevations for that one location, and then you extrapolate from there. So it can't really be tested until you actually go there. But I mean, you know, you can look at other like scenarios, but like I said, there are always differences, whether things that don't, you know.
And let me ask you a different way. Have you ever run the programming for the model on a facility that existed in its operation? And then actually gone to that same facility and measured sound levels and compared your real measurement data to what the model predicted? Have you ever done that?
Yeah.
And how did it work?
In general, it's pretty close. You know, you can have obviously differences. The biggest thing that you need to kind of account for is local noise. So like when we set a sound monitor out on a facility for a period of time, you know, you'll look at the data and, you know, it's pretty consistent with all of these operations. I mean, the noise that's coming off of this is a relatively consistent grind. I mean, you know, you have a bunch of engines running, you know? So what you'll do is you'll look at the data and so even if you're looking at it and say, you know, you're looking at a 15 minute period and all of a sudden, you know, you're noticing an elevation, you know, you look at the data and you look for things that are eight to zero. And then you go from there and you kind of backtrack and try to identify what those noises are. So most often those things get thrown out, you know? The things that actually have a big impact. So that's why it's a time weighted thing. You look over, you know, periods of time. Weather is something that can pretty significantly impact noise. So if you have like a low ceiling, you know, and things are at elevation, the ceiling is in effect lower for the houses that are above things. So sometimes you will see some elevation because of that.
Can you explain ceiling?
When you did the modeling and you said you also didn't have some data, did you happen to do a correlation coefficient study between the data sets and the prediction?
No, I did not. I can ask my engineer if he ran anything, but he does, you know, thousands of his years, so.
Can you explain the ceiling that you're talking about?
Just the cloud cover, you know, so like if you're, you know, at a position on top of the hill, that's, you know, say, you know, 500 feet closer to the cloud cover, that noise is closer when it comes up to kind of, you know, hanging on top of you from the cloud cover.
Based on your anticipated schedule, when would this, when would the drilling start?
Right now for Dionysus, we're approximately January 20.3 for the drilling.
So it'd be starting with no leaves on the trees at that point?
Current's good. Yes, sir.
If the board, if the commission has any other questions, certainly chime in, but we can certainly roll in the letter, which there's some additional analysis was done. And certainly in shifting over to the letter, I'm not skipping over any additional questions you guys might want to have. But so Paige, why don't you go through, walk through the similar analysis and point out some of the additional variables evaluated for Leto?
Sure. So the ordinance summary, same stuff. So limits of 70 decibels during drilling and 75 during completions with hydraulic fracturing. You have a location map. Leto is a little bit denser populated in the immediate vicinity, as you can tell by the number of points that we pulled out to identify. So we kind of just pick and choose because it gets too dense if you go through all of the towns. So you get some that are close, some that are in the middle, some that are further away. But we have 40 receptors that we identified there. During vertical drilling, the maximum, the highest sound levels that we predict are 53.1, and that is at receiver one. Due to the closer proximity of this, Olympus has asked me to run mitigated models. So we did include sound walls on a portion of the well pad for this. So the second model is the vertical drilling configuration with sound walls, 24 foot tall, STC 34 sound walls on two thirds of the pad. Basically, the northwest side is completely open.
And what impact does that have been on?
So, yeah, on R1, adding the sound walls shows a reduction from 53.1 to 44.3 in adding those sound walls. So pretty significant, not quite a 10 decimal reduction, but again, half as loud.
And at that point, would the highest sound level change a little bit?
Yeah, yeah, so it becomes 14 then. So the, with the configuration of the equipment on site and, you know, the termination of the sound wall on the northeast side of the pad, the noise is, we did not block as much noise going to that direction. So there was greater exposure to R14, which is the reason why that also became the highest number.
But still substantially lower?
Significantly lower than the 70 decimal. Yeah, 19.9.
What about going horizontal?
So during horizontal, again, without any mitigation, you know, we're looking at R1 with a maximum level of 50.4 dBA. And then during, or with mitigation, R1 goes from 50.4 to 41.8. At this point, R9 and R14 are shown to be the highest level at 46.1. And again, this is due to equipment locations on the well pad and then exposure due to no wall. So R9 is exposed via the entryway to the well pad. And R14 is the termination of the sound wall on the northeast side. But still all showing well below the allowable limits. The completions model. So R1 at this point is 58.9 decibels. Again, so that's kind of your casual conversation kind of beginning when things start to get to almost 60. So 58.9 without mitigation, still again below the allowable limits, but certainly higher than what we're seeing at Dionysus.
Oh, the allowable limits, correct.
75, yes, yes. And then, so when we mitigated that, again, R14 kind of became your highest receiver point at 55.9, but R1 was reduced from 58.9 decibels to 51.4. So again, showing significant reduction to the east of the pad. And then when we ran the same model with, add the addition of the water transfer trucks, R2 then became the highest receiver at 62, so slightly above receiver one at 61.9. And then when we ran that with the same mitigation, R14 was your highest at 55.8, but we reduced R2 from 62 to 51.4. So again, significant reductions. And then the summary of the deal, you see your highest predicted sound levels with the unmitigated models, you see receiver one, 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 and then two. So we did it a little differently because we had multiple receivers, so that kind of checked that box. The highest sound level predicted without mitigation again was during completions with water transfer, 62 decibels at receiver two. The highest predicted sound levels during the mitigation, mitigated portion was 55.9 during regular completions at receiver 14 and 55.8 at receiver 14 with the water transfer. Water transfer being further away is why during water it was lower. And then receiver one, which is the closest to the pad, 24 Hemlock Street. Sound levels during mitigated are 53.1 and 44.3 mitigating during vertical drilling. During horizontal drilling, it's 15.4 to 41.2 once it's mitigated. Completions 58.9 to 51.4 during mitigation. And then with water transfer, 61.9 to 51.4. And then we have some sound barrier examples of the types of barriers that are common with these kind of operations. Again, the barriers that were modeled were SCC 34, which is standard transvision class, a measure of how much noise is blocked by a particular medium. The product is two and a half pound mass loaded vinyl. When we submitted the impact assessments, there was a copy of the independent testing for the material as far as its noise mitigating properties.
How high were the barriers in this photo?
25 in the photo? The top one is 32, the bottom one is 24.
What were you proposing?
So we modeled with 24 foot mitigation, so it would be three panels high, basically. The panels are eight foot by 20.
What would you expect if it was the 30?
So in general, and again, there's lots and lots of variables. You may catch another decimal or two. But I mean, you, a lot of variables, elevation on the receiver side and then proximity to noise producer. So if you're closer to the noise producer, it's going to have more impact. If you're further away, it's going to have less impact. So there's a lot of variables, but in general, when you run a model, you'll see, you know, anywhere from a half a decimal to maybe three, but not much more.
Lou, using the default, would you be open to actually determining in conjunction with township, a actual ambient sound level?
We know the answer to that. We could certainly talk about it, get back to you on that. I can't commit to that one way or the other. We did not run an ambient out there because of the way your ordinances were.
Any other questions?
Does the highest sound level compare to like the fire whistle?
No, 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 not even close. I mean, on the pad, it's over 100 decibels if you're next to the pumps. But even at the edge of the pad, you're, I mean, frequently down into, you know, the 70s, you know, depending on where you are again. I mean, like you can be at the edge of the pad and it can be, you know, in the high 80s or low 90s. Or it can be in the high 60s and low 70s. It just depends on where you're located. But if you, I mean, that's during frac. Drilling is a little different. But the frac is, the concentration of noise is generally around the center and Suzanne can speak to that a little bit. You know, so you have all your noise sources kind of centered in the middle of the pad, all the pumping trucks, you know?
So all of your, your sound studies have included your sound barrier?
No, 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 just the Leto one, we added the sound barrier to it. The Dionysus one had no mitigation included. Just the Leto.
So you're only proposing sound barrier in the Leto one?
Correct, because farce that some houses nearby.
Yeah, and I understand like vegetation around will help alleviate some of the sound. Would you take into consideration, I know probably once you start and can't stop, but would you consider doing it when there is the most vegetation? And not, I mean, when is the most sound? Can it be done when there's the most vegetation or is that timeframe not?
I would, I would ask, that leads to one question I was going to ask. Is your timing specifically done in the winter to do this when people typically have their windows closed? Because I mean, if you do it in the summer when there's the most vegetation, that's always when people are typically going to have their windows open.
Sure.
Yeah, if you do.
I know, I know. That's what I was asking also about the sound and vegetation. I mean, it's six, one way, half of it another. And we know we're going to get the sound. But if we start getting a lot of complaints, are you willing and capable of fixing the problem or making alterations to alleviate some of the noise?
Sure, there's certainly things that can be done, but that's a better question for representatives. As far as what can you, you want to comment on that?
Yeah, sure. So one into the schedule, right? A lot of things go into play in creating our, our operation schedule, whether it's land acquisition, capital dollars, land exploration, timing of when we're going to each individual project. So it's very hard to like, maybe necessarily put it in one box there. And then to your, to your question, you know, if we do receive a, you know, a complaint or if there's an issue, a lot of times what we'll do is, is, you know, we can work with the individual landowner there. Or at times we have, you know, come and put some additional temporary sound walls up and done some mitigation like that before in the past. We really try to work with the very specific situation there.
Phil, is this something that would go through you? Like if a resident starts complaining about too much noise, do they come to you and then you go to them and say, we need to revise?
It could work a couple of different ways. Obviously, I believe Olympus said they were going to make their contact information available for complaints. Obviously, if I receive a complaint, I will go out, you know, and investigate it as well. There is a process in our ordinance that talks a little bit about that sound complaint process. So it all just depends on where they call. And I'm sure that Olympus will, if there is a complaint, they will more than likely, I'll end up hearing about it one way or the other. And uh I'm sure that uh Olympus will, if there is a complaint, uh they will more than likely, I'll end up hearing about it one way or the other.
Your ordinance conditions, the township being the conduit if complaints come through, but I think we've indicated in their last month or some urban materials. Certainly Olympus will be proactive on that and if they get a inquiry from an individual property owner, if they're not gonna wait to get something from the township, they will proceed to work with that property owner. See if there are ways to to determine what the sound level is and if there are things that can be done to mitigate it, even if it's, you know, below ordinance requirements.
So you'd say it's more of a two-fold enforcement, you guys would self-enforce and then the township would also enforce?
I think there's one one good example I can bring out that, and then you come out to location, the noise was bouncing off the tanks. And you you investigated it and you were able to put up another sound.
Yeah, it basically curtains or, or you know, some kind of sound wall barrier.
Um, I had a question just for uh the audacity's sake. Uh so it seems like uh you're proposing to be right around fifty uh decimals. Uh for some, for the vertical drilling uh in each scenario, uh with mitigated Lido and the other one, uh Dyna ISIS. Uh can you give an example of a common noise that they would hear that's approximately fifty decimals? Is it more like a backpack leaf blower? Is it more like a riding lawnmower?
No, no, those are all really, really loud, um significantly quieter. Um something that's fifty, like I said, a casual conversation sixty, sixty five, so it would be less than that. A a quiet street typically is gonna be in that forty five to fifty decimal range. You know, a car passing at, say, fifty feet or a hundred feet slowly, not ripping by a highway. Um, you know, things like that. I mean, birds chirping can go anywhere from, you know, forties to nineties. Um, I mean, those are, those are the things that you'll see. And like, again, when we listen to sound clips, as we do, I mean, when we, when we monitor, we identify peaks and we try to identify what all of those things are. Dogs barking eighty decibels, you know, so fifty decibels is way less than most of the common things that are gonna be, you know, you know. Like I said, if we're having a conversation, it's fifty decibels is less. Is it audible? Absolutely. I mean, you know, but um, you know, on a quiet night in January, thirties.
Uh, what is the perceived noise uh amount whenever you stack that on top of your ambient sound? So if your ambient sound, say, is sixty five and you have a an additional fifty decimals on top of it, what's the perceived sound? Is that now like seventy or seventy five?
If the ambient is is that high, then then the sound level projected will likely would be almost insignificant. If if so, if you're here, I mean, if somebody's mowing the yard, you know, and it's, you know, your next door neighbor, and it's sixty five at your house, you're likely not going to be hearing anything coming from there at fifty two or fifty one.
Okay.
That's going to be the the significant, I mean, even though it's less sound power, it's much closer. So they mean, you know, so if you're in a city, you know, uh that's, you know, we we have monitoring stations in Chicago right now. And, you know, it's it's common just in in the buildings to be sixty decimals, you know, just with noise outside, you know, so. At sixty decibels, I mean, you know, that's drowning out the noise. Now, if it dips down for some reason, like somebody turns the T V down or whatever, then all of a sudden that noise at fifty may become a little bit more apparent. Because that's the thing with ambient noise, it's not static. So there's there's peaks and valleys.
So that's why I was just gonna ask, how constant is that?
Ambient?
How how constant is a fifty?
So so a noise on a a well pad, um doesn't matter what, you know, kind of phase they're in, it's all, it's all relatively consistent because it's large engines. That's that's the noise producers is is large engines. You know, and there there are, you know, anomalies and things that happen, you know, pipe planning and, you know, different things. But in general, the noise is pretty consistent, you know. Like I said, you can look at it and, you know, you can see if you look at the data. The minimum sound levels is usually the floor and that's usually where your operation is sitting. Um, there's a lot of things that kind of will happen in between there, but that's the floor, you know. So if you're looking at data and, you know, your floor is forty five. Unless you have some summertime stuff where you have cicadas or other, because, because honestly, like during the summer, I mean, if you look at data at night, I mean, it's consistently in the fifties, fifty five. I mean, the the bugs can be very, very loud, depending on where, you know, things are set up, obviously, you know. Um, we just did some monitoring uh along, not far from nineteen, uh where there was a water transfer operation. Um, and, you know, the sound levels were audible, but below any of the ordinance, the actual largest noise producer was the highway. And if you looked at the data, because, you know, we weren't in a a field or anything where there was a lot of bug noise, um where we were monitoring. But the noise, every time a car would drive by and break fifty, every time a tractor trailer would drive by, it would break, you know, fifty five. And this was in the middle of the night, like one o'clock, two o'clock in the morning.
Yeah, I know, because like when my neighbor comes across, we don't have big yards. I know, I only have to put up with that sound for so long because they're gonna be done.
Yeah.
But if you're at a well and you have that constant noise, means that might.
Well, these levels is significantly less than than that.
Is there a difference between the type of fracking, uh say, an electric fleet as opposed to a conventional hydraulic fracking? Is there a different noise level that is perceived?
So with a hydro or with a electric frac fleet, those are turbine driven, and so the the frequency levels are different. Um, they do tend to be slightly quieter, um but there's still a a significant amount of noise. Um, have you ever worked on anything with electric? Um, so, you know, like I said, it's turbine driven as opposed to, you know, a bunch of diesel engines. So instead of having a slightly lower frequency, it's a higher frequency, so it's like, ah, it's a, ah, not quite that high. Singing was never my thing. So I mean, but kind of more of a hum, you know?
Okay, so you think, uh so you've modeled those before?
I've worked with them.
Okay, so is it typically like uh five percent reduction, ten percent?
Again, it's it's kind of hard to say because of, you know, everything is different, you know, but I mean, I I've certainly, things that I've monitored, like, so real life stuff, um, you know, in general, kind of, you know. Between a five and a ten decimal reduction, kind of staying with some of that stuff. Um, but again, it's different frequencies. It's so to some people, that higher frequency is more annoying. It actually sounds more like the cicada. It's kind of remember that buzz from them?
Oh, I love that noise.
I've got some questions. I've got a whole list, just to warn you, I haven't seen you guys for a while. But again. Have you answered them? We can do that, is that okay? Are they noise or are we looking on other issues? Things noise might be in here, this is the one.
Well, Tej is here with duration, so if you have any additional questions, certainly uh let us know, but, yeah, I mean, this is going to be Hollywood Squares of questions, I guess, depending on what substance is determined, who will answer it, so.
Leading maybe last time with Solon, April twenty second, I'm not sure. I asked about the competition drilling lines. And you agreed to get the competition information to me, but I never received it. So um maybe you could try to get that together and send it to me.
You did provide, you you mean, you talked about the S D S sheets?
Well, yeah, I did get the S D S sheets and we'll get to that, but I was looking for something a little more comprehensive, but we will get to the S D S sheet. Um, let's see. Well, I guess the question, I think you you may have answered it already in this, and that was just, what's your current timeline for developing these wells?
Sure. Okay, walk through updated top line, so uh Dyna ISIS, uh we've got the five planned wells there. Uh, construction uh of the location is approximately September of twenty twenty two uh for uh construction. Uh drilling uh would be approximately January twenty twenty three. Um, and then uh the completions, I draw a broad string phase would be April of twenty twenty three. And then drill out would be May of of twenty twenty three, and then soon after that, we would turn in for production. So that's that's Dyna ISIS. And then for Lento, it's uh construction is September of twenty twenty seven. And then drilling December twenty twenty seven, and completions June twenty twenty eight. And then completions, the drill out phase, uh August of twenty twenty eight there, so. I always try to caveat, and our schedule do shift and and change from top to, so.
Uh, I have one quick follow-up question to that. Uh, so the five planned wells for each one, is there any more additional wells that could fit on that pad?
Yes.
Okay, is there, what is the maximum amount that could fit on each pad?
It kind of depends, and that's always a little bit difficult question to answer there, so, you know, kind of currently, when you you look through our longer term schedule. A lot of our pads may have around ten wells on them, twelve, you know, and then we we can't go even larger than that if need be. Uh, but a lot of time, it just depends on our spacing between uh each well and then the number, you know, um. You have different formations that they were there that wouldn't come back if it's there.
What do you think typically, uh for whatever reason, and I don't know who told me or whatever, nine sticks out for Dyna ISIS? And then I thought that Lido was pretty well complete with five. Is that approximately the number you think? Or did I just get that from somewhere, from some random person?
Yeah, I think at, you know, at one point, we looked at doing the the whole nine there on that piece, but it really varies on, you know, our land and and where that sits. But I hate to say is we'd only do exactly this many when, you know, if another opportunity comes up or, you know, our schedule shifts or something along those lines. But, yeah, we could fit nine on there without, out of any trouble.
Okay, what about uh any, you think any more than nine?
The the potential is there.
The potential is there?
Yes.
Okay, and then is Lido pretty much at five or is potential for more there?
It could go up more as well.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Fracking water attitude. I spoke with you uh back in early part of the year, um you indicated that the plan was to use propylene oxide. Uh, as an attitude. Is that still the case for your uh fracking water? Another name for this, that whole oxygen rain, does that ring a bell?
This is when I provided one a while back.
Yeah, it was a while.
Yeah, uh, I mean, I I would, if it was on that S D S and we, I I, we had used it on a previous track, it could probably be utilized again.
So you think it will be that compound?
Yeah.
It looks like, okay. And then based on the information you sent me, um assuming you get about a ten percent recovery, that that was your number, uh maybe back. Uh, you're going to be for both sites combined, and again, I think this was assuming ten wells per site, so the numbers might change. You'd be putting at the rate you gave me about two and a half tons of propylene oxide uh down those holes. That's not about right to you?
I I wouldn't be able to answer after the reports are on that calculation. I'd have to get back and and look at the numbers.
But it would be in about two hundred and seventy million gallons of water. Okay, that's the, those are the numbers you gave me, those are the rates, and and you can check them, get back to me if you think I did it wrong, maybe I did, but. That's the magnitude of the chemistry, of the of the chemicals that I think you're talking about, if it was ten wells, so, okay. Um, do you see any particular health hazards or dangers or risks from putting that amount of that chemical into the ground? No? Um, okay. Are are you aware that propylene oxide is a chemical carcinogen?
Well, I think it goes to kind of our well construction and the isolation of the potable drinking water and making sure we have our zones uh isolated with casing and cement so that, you know. Where that water is injected is six thousand feet underground and, you know, that would have been kind of kind of that.
Well, what happens to it after you inject it? Do you do you take it back out?
Well, over time, you know, you do get uh near the water that you have, you know, fractured with back, you know, over over a time period. And then it comes and is is put into our our produced water tanks.
So you withdraw this after some period of time?
Well, it it flows, it flows back with the gas and then we have to separate out the the one.
Okay, but it, but it doesn't stay down and make its way to the aquifer or anything, or?
No, that's why we we do the the number of different casings and cementing uh isolate the zones from from that.
How constant are you that you're capturing most of this carcinogen that you're putting in the ground?
We feel pretty confident that that it comes back and then we handle it in an appropriate manner and and.
Do you give us an estimate of the, you know, what rate you get, do you get eighty percent or a half percent?
No, not on that particular, you know, constituent.
I mean, I'm not trying to split hairs with these percentages, but they're pretty vast amounts of regulated carcinogen in the ground. Many people in this township get their drinking water from that ground, okay? And you're you're telling us that you got it contained, and you recover it, and I'm asking, well, how efficient is your recovery? You you can't answer that.
You know, being the fact that we're, you know, seven thousand foot, you know, uh vertically deep. You know, in into the ground there, then, you know, as Mr. Cleveland mentioned, you know, we have our multiple strings of the casing that are that are cemented all. And uh, you know, we we produce back through uh, you know, our five and a half inch.
Well, you you gave me the number of ten percent recovery. So does that mean if you put? Two hundred and seventy million gallons down into the ground, you get twenty seven million back? And that's what I took it to mean, that's what you said.
Yeah, over a period of time, yeah.
So ninety percent of it's still there or somewhere. Well, that's the ninety percent I'm talking about of this carcinogen. It's been released into the environment. So I mean, if I if I understand you correctly, you're only recovering ten percent of what you put in. So ninety percent is released into the environment.
Yeah.
I don't think that's a good thing.
These are all chemicals that uh are approved by the E P.
This is an E P A regulated carcinogen. I can give you the documentation. It is a group B two probable human carcinogen. You can't get around that. That is what it is.
And again, as Mr. Johnson indicated, there are multiple casings. Uh, what's the typical groundwater level? But, you know. Or any cases?
And we got a couple hundreds foot down, you know, with our surface casing, and then we have an intermediate casing. That goes a couple thousand feet and is a hundred percent uh uh cement and then. And then uh we we cement our five and a half uh inch casing, uh production casing up into the vertical section. Um, of of the well also.
Uh, can everybody speak up a little bit? I got some comments that it's a little bit hard to hear, uh the applicants.
I'll start, go back up to the microphone, sorry.
Please, please turn it on then. Little technical difficulties.
So back to this recovery, I mean. You told me it was a ten percent recovery. Now, is that correct or is that not correct? Because all of the plumbing that you're describing is very impressive, but if it only nets that ten percent, that's pretty dismal. And that tells me you're putting ninety percent of several hundred tons of a carcinogen, you're releasing that into our environment.
Yeah, and and to be clear on the on the ten percent, right, when we're looking at, you know, or you'll maybe hear the phrase blowback, you know, comeback. That's that initial load of water that we, you know, recover, you know, when we first put the wells into production. But over time, you continue to get that water back. That water continues to to come back, but, you know, the water production rates do, you know, slow down, you know, over time there. So a lot of times we may use that, you know, ten percent as that that initial recovery coming back, that the wells do uh continue to uh to come back and continue.
So how much carcinogen do you think it's okay to deposit into in? So how much carcinogen do you think it's okay to deposit into the environment only there?
The, is, the water that doesn't flow back is a mile and a half down and nowhere near either causing any human exposure or anywhere near any groundwater. It's because, and it's not hydraulically connected to the potable.
I think, unless I missed something in the beginning of what you said, I, I don't think it's a concentration, 100% concentration of that being pumped out, it's mostly freshwater that gets pumped out and fractured, and there's a percentage of diluted chemicals put in.
Well, I'm just gonna off the numbers again.
Okay, no, I, I just didn't know exactly, I'm just unclear.
Well, all right. How will you address this in your wastewater management and then for the 10% or whatever percentage you do recover?
So like we said, we do, the water does come back up, separated from the gas, it goes into our produced water tanks. We have produced water trucks that empty those tanks, and that, as Manny said, that gradually goes down. I just didn't think it was gonna stay on.
Yeah, it probably won't.
So then, those tanks either take you a couple different places. One would be a facility that can recycle it and then be reused in other completions activities by us or by other operators, where sometimes you take it directly to other operators for reuse, and it gets you that way. And so it's, it's handled. That's how we handle our produced water. And we sample it and submit our waste reports on a monthly basis to DP. We do biannual sampling with DP and submit all those reports to them. So we, we have to keep track of, of every gallon of produced water that we dispose or reuse.
I don't know how the, how the regulations work on this in terms of spilling versus intentionally injecting, but it turns out that for under surplus or for the EPA, just spills and such, the reportable quantity, okay, for, for those two B carcinogens, the propylene oxide, is 100 pounds. Is it, so, so it's a situation, I guess, I might have this wrong, but if you had a drum of this, you know, at your facility and somehow the drum got knocked over and you spilled 100 pounds, 101 pounds.
Yeah. At the federal level.
Yeah, at the federal level.
Correct.
Correct. But you can put tons of it down into the ground. Is that, I mean, did I get that right?
Into a zone that's not hydrologically connected, and we have the casing and cementing to protect from going into the potable water.
Well, I don't know. I personally have grave concerns with this, with this enterprise. And everything I've heard say at night, there will be anything to resolve those concerns.
Mr. Johnson, obviously you have a lot of expertise in this area.
I'm sorry, I'm not.
Obviously, you have a lot of expertise in this area. I would just say that these types of issues are heavily regulated at both the EPA and the EP level, and Olympus is committed to complying with those requirements.
Well, you know, if, if that's your response, if that's your philosophy, that you want to be able to basically take carcinogen compounds, put them in the ground, and you do that under the shield of, well, I've complied with government regulations, I guess there's not a lot we can say about that. The question is, how do you feel about that? How do the people in this community feel about that? The fact that you've complied with a regulation is little comfort. Thank you.
Okay. John, do you have any other questions?
I don't even know if I ask any questions. No. But I could go on.
I have a question, we're back to scheduling. What would impact that schedule make a significant change?
So, you know, sometimes, you know, we were drilling in another area, right? And we're, you know, having, either the wells are taking longer than what we initially thought, or something along those lines can cause your schedule to slide. Sometimes, you know, if we've got, say, if we're working with a particular landowner and we're looking for a particular lease, and so we don't have that yet, that can cause a schedule to slide. Also, you know, just, each year you've got, you know, your capital dollars to work with, you know, and you, you get to a point and it's like, okay, we want to slow down a little bit. That could cause your schedule to slide, but also, seeing in the past, schedules can move up. So that's the other piece, you know, that, that has happened before. You know, sometimes if we're running one drilling rig in our, in our area, and we determine, well, let's pick up a second rig, that would shift that schedule up, you know, quite a bit if we would go to a two-rig program or three-rig program. So lots of variables come into play as to, you know, which, which way your schedule's gonna go there. So always, like I said, anytime I come up here, I always try to say, you know, these things do potentially shift there. And that's something we would make sure that we communicate, you know, with the township. Kim does an excellent job in the other townships we work in saying, hey, we're sliding a month, or hey, we're not on, you know, for the next few months, and we do try to keep that communication open with you all.
Do you have any traffic consultants here or anything?
Yes, we do.
Perhaps maybe you have an overview of the responses to the comments?
Yes, we did receive the comments from Trans associates and prepared a response as they were submitted earlier this week. And in them was just a few questions. I can go one by one if you'd like. The first one was just commenting that the traffic study that was forwarded was not signed and sealed by an engineer. With the submission this week, we provided a signed and sealed copy of the report. The next one discussed about the highway occupancy permit will be required for the site driveway along Oak Road. Was the traffic study scope and meaning application completed? Was the traffic study submitted to PennDOT for review? If so, the township requests a copy of PennDOT's review. An occupancy permit has been obtained for the Lito well pad through PennDOT. There's a permit number issued. There was no traffic study required from PennDOT, so no traffic study scope was completed. The study was completed for Olympus's understanding of potential traffic impacts and for their use. Okay, the next comment talked about the factors applied to the traffic counts and how they're incorrect, and the count should be increased by a proportion of the 2019 volumes and the 2020 volumes. These are referring to the ADT volumes along the roads that we obtained compared against PennDOT's volumes. And the percent increase was calculated using that methodology of proportion to 43%. However, the comment continued that based on the counts along Route 910, the adjustment factors used may be overestimating the volumes. We did recalculate the percent increases based on their methodology. It was slightly higher for the 1% as, as indicated, sorry. However, the review of our peak hour traffic volume showed that the PM peak hour experienced the highest hourly volume, and this percentage was referring to the AM peak hour, and that we actually provided a more conservative growth rate in the end for at least the PM peak hour. It ended up being some of the dictating factor for the analyses. So we did not revise, revise the analyses based on these growth rates that we had calculated. We had used the methodology once recommended to us by PennDOT, so it's just the difference of calculating the percentages. The trip generation, the average week they do the trips, total more than 24 times that AM peak hour and PM peak hour trips. During the fracturing stage, it is assumed that the peak hour traffic volumes shown are sustained every hour of the day. Is there a higher hourly volume for the peak hour shown? The peak, the traffic volumes provided, were provided to us by Olympus based on their anticipated projections. We didn't adjust the volume, so it was assuming that 100% of the water would be hauled to the site. If you do divide the ADT by 24, it is showing in the peak hour that it was two trips short. It is anticipated that the traffic will be reduced once the water source is provided on site. So again, the analysis wasn't revised for the two trips that were short for the numbers. The next comment was about truck turning templates were requested for movements into and out of the driveways. We prepared those auto-term movements for the site driveways and included them in the revised study. It requested what was the proportion of the single unit versus, which is a single unit 40-foot truck versus a wheelbase 62 truck. The single unit trucks are going to be used primarily for hauling the water, and the wheelbase 62 trucks are typically used for hauling sand. It is anticipated that approximately 85 to 90% and of the trucks will be the single unit trucks, and 10 to 15% will be the WB62 trucks with 100% of the water hauled to the site for that assumption. Next comment was about will WB62s be used around the clock during the fracturing stage? If so, is flagging operations for the middle road extension proposed around the clock? We replied during the hydraulic fracturing stage that the well, the trucks will be used for hauling sand, and the flagging will be used when necessary. The next comment requested an evaluation of site distance at the proposed site driveways. These were previously completed and provided with the HOP applications. So we incorporated the site distance forms that were provided into the revised traffic study and submitted. There were minor report comments, one was a typographical error for William Flynn Highway. It's state Route 8, not typographically state Route 28. Trip generation calculation should be provided for Millor Street. We prepared a table incorporated into the letter and also provided this table and the calculations for how we determine the traffic on Millor Street in the revised study. Signal warrants, it was said that they could not verify the volume used for the four-hour volume warrant. The spreadsheet was used, developed, was provided with the warrants, and it was based off of the peak hour traffic volume. So if there was more application needed, we could provide it. Lastly, was a comment about the impact fee for each well pad site equals 46 PM peak hour trips times the unit cost per trip for the transportation service area. It's understood that there is an impact fee program. The number of peak hour trips may be impacted by Olympus's final water sourcing arrangements for each well pad, so I think further coordination will be required for that.
My understanding that any improvements to the roads really are not required due to the temporary nature of the truck traffic.
That, that is correct.
My question back to Manny.
Yes, sir.
Scheduling of four or five months, is that one well?
That, what, kind of the scheduled timeframe I gave you guys, that covers five wells on each location.
So all five wells would be built?
Yes, in that time period, yes, sir.
I mean, it was a practical matter from a cost and efficiency perspective. You want to, you don't just want to do one well, come back later, do another one.
Appreciate that. Yeah, Mr. Guts, would you mind giving an overview of your concerns you had with our study? Is there are any other outstanding issues you have?
Yeah, basically, we, we had really just one, one primary concern, and that's the flagging operation on Middle Road Extension. Going to the traffic study that was done. It looks to me that, my number's right here. So the Dionysus well, well site would have during the peak traffic operations about a two and a half month, or excuse me, I have to be wrong, that's a one-month duration. The Lito site or Loto site would be two and a half month duration. So this is the peak, the two peak durations of traffic. Before and after, they're greatly diminished, and most of this is because of the water trucks. As the southern said, or she's saying that about 90%, if, if they kind of truck in all the water, 85 to 90% of those trucks will be water trucks, 40-foot long tankers. They ran turning templates up of Oak Road and Middle Road Extension. And Oak Road, not many problems, and then you got, I think, a lot of foot lanes there, somewhat of shoulder alignments fairly, fairly well. Middle Road Extension, we all know, is, is something else. So our concern really, the main concern just comes down to the larger frac sand trucks. And for that one month time, they would be servicing the Dionysus site. How do they get up and down? Because 10%, if you're saying even 10% of tractor trailers, these are 62-foot long wheelbase tractor trailers, they're gonna be using Middle Road Extension for a month's time. 10% of the daily volume is still 110 trips a day, 55 trucks up, 55 trucks down. Our question was, well, this is a point for our operation, they're clearly over the center line. They need a flagging operation, we're not disputing that, and I don't think they're disputing that, but it comes down to, how's this work, the logistics of this? So you have a full-time flag, this flagger force at your full time on call? That you're flagging this one mile stretch of road or so to get the larger trucks up and down? So really, and the rest of the comments are relatively minor. I think it just comes down to this flagging operation, how, maybe we just need to ask then how, how they perceive that working for 30 days or however long that's, that's gonna be. And again, the other site, not so much a problem. I have not seen the latest report, I, they did the response letter from them, I understand it just came in the other day, so I did not get the new report because we didn't receive it yet. But they addressed everything else, I think this is really the flagger question.
Mr. Johnson. Actual comment, I don't put that particular issue, you like.
Yeah, so as we, you know, work with the county, you know, in this project and whatever, you know, comes from that, as, as we work through it and you determine that you need an escort vehicle or a flagging operation, you know, a lot of times what, what we'll do is, is the, especially with the sand trucks that are coming in, you know, we try to limit, you know, stacking a whole bunch of them in at one time, try to space them out as best we can. And then a lot of times we'll have an escort vehicle in front of them. You've got your CD channel set up as well from, from the location, and you have that constant communication of what's coming in. And then, you know, there would be, you know, say, a pedestrian vehicle or something coming in that area, we make sure we get slowed down and get over so they can pass appropriately there. But it's, it's a common practice, you know, for us from time to time, depending on the areas, that would work.
I, I think what Mr. Guts is saying is there's no passing on Middle Road Extension.
Yeah.
That, that road would have to be shut down when there's a truck coming up. Which is what I believe, so the flagman would need to be there.
Yeah, I mean, especially if we're working with the county, definitely, if it's, we've got to have it, it will happen there.
Any questions by the commission?